Good, alright, let's go ahead and get this meeting called to order if we could. Got a pretty extensive agenda, so we probably need to get into it. Alright, we've got a quorum, we'll now call this to order and we'll do roll call, starting with the High Sheriff of Nottingham.
Tommy Johnson, third press.
Rick Warren.
Marissa Treat.
Jessica Clayton for County Commissioner Mon.
Butch Freeman.
Miles Davidson.
Gretchen Crawford for County Assistant Lawrence Stein.
Alright, seeing that we have a quorum, we shall continue. Notice of the meeting was properly posted on September twenty seventh. Jessica, could we get you to lead the pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure.
Okay, next is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of September nineteenth.
I'll leave approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve, all favor.
Aye.
Okay, now we're getting, now we'll go into departmental items, item number two is.
Yes, sir, this is just to name my new chief deputy, for those of you that haven't met him, Paul Foster, in the back row back there. Came on, on the twentieth, and this is to place him on the BET to replace Colton Murphy, so I'll make this motion.
Well, okay, we got a motion and a second, all favor.
Aye.
Congratulations, Paul, and pleased to have you.
Or condolences.
Our condolences, also true. Okay, Cody.
Mr. Freeman and Ms. Gretchen, would you please vote, please?
Oh, she already has, it's pressed.
Thank you.
Cody.
Alright, if you recall, at the September supplement, BET had a recommendation in the, in the September supplement to fund some money for new courtrooms over at the juvenile center. This is actually just a line item to create in that capital account, so that money can go into there. Money was already approved by this board, we just need the line item created.
Okay, so this is an accounting issue, and just we'll take care of it and get the money moving, okay. Alright, any questions?
Motion.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is a presentation by Stacy Trumbo and Steve Cooper, and at this time, I'll turn it over to our county clerk.
Yes, thank you, and I believe that Steve Cooper, who's with the Bond Oversight Committee, is going to be doing the presentation. Everybody should have a copy of the PowerPoint at their seat, and it will also be on the screen for you. Stacy, I don't know if you have comments before he speaks?
I was just gonna introduce Steve Cooper to you, because I'm not sure many of you have met him, he's on your Citizens Bond Oversight Advisory Committee that makes recommendations straight to the Board of County Commissioners. And I work with that board monthly at our meetings to go through the details of this program, so they can make their recommendations. And Steve's on that committee, very familiar with this, so he's gonna lead you through the presentation.
That's great, thank you, and thanks for explaining the, all the pieces there, Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, Stacy, and thanks for the opportunity to be here. As Stacy mentioned, I'm on the Citizens Bond Advisory Board for the new jail, fairly new to that board, having been there just in the last five months or so, so I feel like I've been drinking from a fire hose, getting caught up. And as a citizen from afar, I've been kind of watching the jail, I mean, you can't read the news in this town without hearing about it occasionally, and kind of wondered what was going on, so it's been very enlightening to be a part of that board. And one thing the board has come to realize is, there's not a lot of good information out there about what's going on, and we have kind of taken it upon ourselves to, to do what we can, to share information about the project, and the financial status, and the need, and why we're doing this. And to that end, Stacy and I have kind of put together this presentation, we've done it to a group at Rotary, we did a group of leadership Oklahoma City folks a couple of weeks ago, and Marissa saw one of those, and I guess she felt like it might be appropriate for us to go through that here, so that's what we will do. We'll go through a little bit of the design, won't spend a lot of time on that, a little bit of kind of the situation we're in, and look at the numbers, and then some thoughts on the way forward. So maybe, do I have the power here?
Steve, before you start, what's your background?
I'm a construction guy, I currently have a company that is an owner's rep firm, we manage commercial construction projects for our clients, and so the world of kind of project management and budgeting, and how you get from concept to completion and oversight, is kind of the world that I live in as, as a professional. This is a picture of the outside of the jail, the jail is at Southeast Twenty Second and Grand, it is a neighborhood that we want to be sensitive to, we have challenged the architects to make a building that serves as a jail, but doesn't look like a jail, and would be something that you might be proud to have as a neighbor. The architect is HOK, they are a nationally known firm in the world of criminal justice, they have done a lot of jails, we have relied heavily on their experience with other jails in the design of this. And as I go through this, if you have questions, please jump in. This is another exterior view, this, you can kind of see the staff entrance there, the little black square. The jail, and this is the Behavioral Health Center, there's kind of two main components to the project, the jail itself and the Behavioral Health Center. And, I mean, you guys are probably aware of the, the relationship between those and the need for the behavioral health to come along with the jail and the benefits that that provides. The behavioral health is, is connected but separate, it is also separately funded by ARPA money, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. This is the site, it's the, the area of the dashed line there, Southeast Twenty Second on the south, Grand Boulevard on the east. The site was recommended by the advisory board to the commissioners after a lengthy and exhaustive search of alternatives. It, we had a list of seventeen criteria that we established as we were looking at sites, and this, it's a good site. The location is good, the utilities are there, it's relatively flat, no environmental issues, it's cost effective to build on compared to a lot of the alternatives that were analyzed. So, from a, from our perspective, it's a good site in a good place. This is kind of an overview of the, an aerial view of the center, you see the detention center, there on the right, and the behavioral health there on the left. The center of the, the entrance of the detention center is there on Grand, and then you go down Twenty Second, and the entrance to the Behavioral Health Center is there. This is an un- illegible floor plan at the scale, at this scale, but you can kind of see the jail there at the top, and the purple down on the left is the Behavioral Health Center. This is a blow up of the Behavioral Health Center, you see that connects but is separate, that is a requirement based on the reimbursement that we get on the Behavioral Health Center. You see the green areas there, that was kind of a significant design feature, trying to bring light and green areas in to each of the four pods there where patients are held and treated. The current jail is eighteen hundred beds, and there's been a lot of discussion about how big does this jail need to be. This analysis by our architects takes into account the current population of the jail, projections for growth of Oklahoma City over the years, and it tries to factor in the, to the fact that we do have a detention center that should relieve some of the load, and we're trying to do better with regard to diversion programs, and that that should also help relieve the load going forward. But they come up with, I think, what does that say, twenty-three thirty-eight as the number of beds, we're rounding that up to twenty-four hundred, and calling that our target. I think there's still some internal discussion about, about that, there's also some that say maybe eighteen hundred is enough, and that, I think we still need to continue to have that dialogue. Kind of the fundamentals of the project don't change if we make that, that difference, is one pod there that can easily be added or deducted, and as you'll see, the finances are not feasible right now, in either case. Another kind of situation, and I know you guys are aware of this, that kind of hangs over the jail, is the US Department of Justice Civil Rights Division came in in two thousand eight and said, your jail's bad, and you gotta fix it. And we have kept them at bay over the years, but we know that, you know, we're approaching the twenty year anniversary of that notice, and that, you know, they don't tell you you have twenty years to solve this problem, but from what we know and what we've seen them do other places, we feel like that's a milestone coming up in two thousand twenty-eight, and that if we don't do something as a county to replace the jail we have, they could come in and say, okay, we're taking over, we're gonna build a jail for you, we're gonna send you the bill, and we don't want that, it would cost more to do that, we would lose all control over exactly what we were doing, what it cost, and how we did it. So we really feel a need to get this done before the Department of Justice makes this. So what are the numbers? In two thousand twenty-one, there was a two hundred and sixty million dollar bond issue, some of that money has been spent on land, some of it on architecture and other costs. So as we sit here today, there's about two hundred and twenty million dollars available to build the jail. A twenty-four hundred bed jail costs six hundred and eighty million dollars, that budget has been established by Flintco, we have hired them as our construction manager, and they're providing design review and budget input at every stage of the design. If you dial that back to eighteen hundred beds, the number is six hundred million, but there's still a huge gap. The behavioral health piece is forty-five million, and we do have an ARPA grant of fifty million to fund that, those monies have to be committed by the end of this year, and we are working towards doing that. The bonding capacity of Oklahoma County is around two hundred million dollars, so even if we were to use up the balance of that capacity, we still don't stretch, that gives us four forty, so we still don't stretch to the six hundred. So the question, I think, before all of us is, how do we fund this? I think we're looking at a PPP as a possible alternative, and the other thing that our board has recommended be considered is the county sales tax. And I think that's the end of my brief presentation, any comments or questions?
Thank you, and I think before we get to questions, I just want to note that the presentation is attached on the agenda, so for anybody out in the audience that wants a copy of it, it should be attached to our, I'm sorry? It will be after, but they can, but point, yes, you can get the attachment, yes. So that, I know some people are taking pictures, but you can get it, and if you have a problem with it, feel free to give us a call, and we'll email it over to you. Go ahead.
Other questions?
I have one question, on the engineering side, you said, mentioned that the water utilities, the sewer, everything's there, but has an engineering study been done to see if we can tap those water lines, are those water lines already completely?
Stacy, you might help me, I understand that it has.
You know, CEC is the engineering sub to HOK, and they did a thorough study, and all the utilities are in place, I don't have to extend anything. And there's enough water supply, enough sewer, just to tap right in. That's one of the beauties of this site, you save tens of millions of dollars by not having to run utilities.
On the mental health facility, it's my understanding that there'll be sixty-six beds, is that correct?
There's sixty beds, it'll be in the base bid, and then we'll put in another twenty as an alternate bid, just in case we can afford, afford it, we'll build eighty beds in the behavioral if we can.
And with this mental health facility, and I know we're restricted on how much funds we have right now, but is it being built to where we could expand it later? And then also, could you highlight or touch on the additional mental health beds that are going to be in the jail? And then additionally, can you explain that screening process, and the partnerships that we have with the diversion hubs and team and others, how is all of that working together?
Well, if you see the orange on the kind of bottom left corner, that's your intake area, and everybody that's arrested will come through intake, and they'll be evaluated by mental health professionals. If they have low enough charges and they qualify, they can go straight to that behavioral care center.
Okay, what if we don't have enough beds?
Well, we kind of modeled this after Nashville, Tennessee, it was one of the first to do this in the country, their average population in their behavioral care is about mid to high thirties. Because not many people really qualify, their charges may be too high, or, or maybe they do get to go to the behavioral hea- health center, but they don't do what they're supposed to do, they go right back to jail, so.
The purple areas in the main jail are incarcerated behavioral.
So, yeah, if you do go to the main jail, we do have behavioral health beds in there as well for incarcerated people that have high charges that still need mental health care.
That's a couple hundred, correct?
It's, right, right now, it's between two and four hundred beds, that, we haven't settled on the final numbers, as you're aware, and, but we're gonna have a lot of beds in the incarcerated area for that very thing.
And the main reason for the behavioral health is more of a diversionary for the low threshold individuals, and to restore competency for those that can be within the court. The system that we saw in Nashville, the orange, there will be an actual line on the ground, that is a go, do not go into the facility, and what will happen is, the jailer themselves, and what we're anticipating is representative from the DA's office, representative from the public defender, and a health provider, all within that area will be screened through a flow-through process, and once they reach that line, if they have all three to four goes, then they come into our facility, if not, they do not come into our facility, if they need further healthcare, the arresting agency takes them to a healthcare agency. If they need restoration, and they could actually come into our BACC, then that's the intent there as well. So, that whole orange area is a triage, if you will, spot for us to reduce the liability and reduce the deaths with inside the jail, and get them the treatment that they actually need, instead of the way that we're doing it now, and Mr. Alba is, and I'm gonna steal one of his famous quotes, is all we do now right now is warehouse people, that's all we are, is a warehouse, we are not a rehabilitative center, we were never built to be a rehabilitative center. That facility was never built for mental health, it was never built for any sort of healthcare, period. What we have now is nothing but a warehouse for people, and it shows.
So, the jail and the mental health facility, they're on the same property, on the same property, but they are separate, correct? So you have a separate staff that will run the mental health facility, and a separate team that runs the jail, and you just work together, correct?
The intent is to actually put out, for the Behavioral Health Center, is to put it out to bid, to have behavioral health professionals actually run that facility and not ourselves, so we are actually in the process of where we are at now with like turnkey and everything else, we're in a spot to where we have to immediately transition and pivot to where we're gonna bring some of that stuff in-house, and start doing it that way. That may be a cost savings, it may not be, one of the big things that I'm worried about with bringing some of that stuff in-house is liability, because it'd be solely placed on us, I think that is a big issue that we have to remain cognizant about as we go look at our medical providers. By the seventy-five foot separation, the important thing for us to realize and remember here, is that seventy-five foot separation actually allows us to have a Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, that is a huge thing. Now, with the Oklahoma City Chambers help, they're gonna go in and they're gonna ask for a Medicare Medicaid waiver, and the state will be on the hook for a third, and the feds are gonna be on the hook for two thirds, and that will reduce our medical costs even more drastically, so this entire exhaustive process, just on the medical front, this is, these are the things that we're just doing just for the medical, to save millions and millions of dollars. That's just a fraction of what this committee, and Stacy, and the fine people that are serving, volunteering, mighty volunteering, have put together for huge cost savings for this county, so, and they've done, they've done great work.
Thank you.
One other thing about the intake area, there is office space in there for team and north care and diversion hub and so forth, so upon release, those folks, if they want to, can meet with those people and get further treatment upon their release, they don't have to, but they can. So it's, it's something else that's available, for the, what the committee said, we want a rehabilitative center, not a warehouse, so that's what we're doing, it comes with a cost, and you've heard the cost. The public-private partnership that he mentioned, a lot of people are confused about that, there's a lot of companies across the country that will fund this, but you have to pay them back. And the payback on a twenty-five or thirty-year note, if we find somebody that will turn in, we opened those bids on October ninth in this room, I'm gonna estimate, you know, it's gonna be a number beyond what you could pay back. So, you're gonna have to have a revenue source for that payback if we're going to contract with one of these public-private partners. And that's why this commi- committee here recommended what they did to the commissioners, and they're still considering it, they haven't made a decision.
It's a two-story, a two-story facility, right?
No, it's a one-story, but it's got a mezzanine level.
Okay.
For, you know, inmates on what you would consider a second floor, but no elevators required.
Okay, that was my next.
I think, I think another important part.
There will be elevators if there's a second floor.
There will be elevators, yeah, I think there's. But there's no, no inmates upstairs. And the, the facility also has three courtrooms, four courtrooms, which are an important part of how it operates remote from, from this building and the courtroom, so a lot of the, the appearances that folks have to make can be done within this building without having to be transported or even leaving the building.
And that's, you know, secondarily, to add to that, we're not only looking at courtrooms, but we're looking at everything that surrounds the court function, that's court clerk, that's public defender, and that's DA offices, just so you're aware, we will have spot for the court clerk to actually operate in there.
Yeah, and place, places for the diversion programs, offices for chaplains, and places for them to meet, it's all being kind of thought of and incorporated.
We hadn't even gone over the release process, with the, in the release process, there's another triage, and so as these individuals leave, they're actually gonna go through a, it's almost modeled after what, if West Town, if you've ever seen West Town or know what West Town is, it's over in Mulligan Flats, I believe, that's where you grew up at there, Mr. Warren. So, West Town is a clearinghouse for individuals seeking help to get off the streets, so what this, what we've envisioned on the exit and release of these individuals is, they're gonna go through, and they're gonna see diversion hub, they're gonna see all of these individual spots, that they can have help, transportation, they can have jobs, they can do all of these things before these individuals are ever released back into public, so they, we're, we're huge on the tri- triage, and knowing exactly what type of people and the kind of help that they're gonna need, not only entering, but also exiting, so this is gonna be, it's a game changer. HOK keeps telling us that we're the first in the nation to do this, it has taken a very long time for us to get to this point, but it is, has been a very extensive process, and something that we've researched across the country, so.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, I don't think we actually need to vote of any kind on item four.
The next item, thank you very much for coming in today.
Item five, Madam County Clerk.
Yes, so this is just a follow-up to that, and opening it up for discussion, or if we wanted to make any sort of recommendation, I would like to consider, I would actually like to make a motion that BET continues to look at this, and that they do take a deep dive into the plan that was presented today, and to look at the numbers, and to help give suggestions on how we can fund this jail too.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, hearing none, please vote.
Why not?
We had one vote under duress.
Yep.
Motion passes.
So just some more discussion on this item, I think one of the things that, that he mentioned was the number of beds. We're looking at eighteen hundred, I think, to twenty-four hundred, the reason that we're looking at twenty-four hundred, the count today is fifteen hundred and seven, since January of this year, it has moved from twelve forty-two on average to fifteen thirty-seven as of last month. The reports that where our population is actually going down inside the jail is misleading and it's incorrect. Literally, I get a daily count from the detention center on what our count is, so just to clarify why we're looking at twenty-four hundred, if you've noticed and looked around, our population is exploding. We are the crossroads of America, we have a lot of bad actors that are coming through here, the sheriff's doing a great job, and helping us put these individuals, the human traffickers, the drugs, everything else, we've got to have a place to put them. So, that's why we're looking at twenty-four hundred, and I think that's just the beginning, one of the other things that you mentioned, Madam Clerk, is the ability to expand, everything about this has been thought about with the ability to expand, the purchase of the land, having enough to be able to expand on, because what they did down here was they, they moved too quick, they did it a one-year. What they did down here was they, they moved too quick. They did it a one-year sales tax. Never planned on money for maintenance and operations. The, it produced like fifty-two million dollars. So again. They went out, asked for money and then built a jail to that budget instead of saying, this is the jail we need. This is the budget we should go seek out. We didn't do that this time. This is something that we should be doing now. So I appreciate bringing the. Financial aspect of this forward because it's, it's dire and if we don't do something today. We will have DOJ coming in here and DOJ will increase your property tax by thirty to forty percent. And you do not get a say in it.
Miles, I agree with a lot, but this project, we backed into this project, which is a big mistake. It's a big, we should have outlined our cost, our money. We should be looking at what it's going to cost for operations. We can't afford the operations we got now. We're struggling. And so now we're going to o- open up a facility, possibly keep this one open, have a new one, operate two of them, possibly operate a mental health center. We, we need to figure that out. Instead of backing into it, we need to make a plan right away because. According to the charts, you're going to have it built in three years.
I must be missing something because there is a plan in place. Yes, you backed into two hundred and sixty million dollars, but those commissioners, they did that. We're trying to solve this issue now. This is the plan. This is how we're going to serve the citizens that we were all elected to serve. This is how we're going to protect our citizens. We have to figure out how to get them. We are not going to operate two facilities. If you haven't noticed. There was a jail report that says in the next five to seven years, we're going to have to do something to stabilize this building down the street. Because it's starting to sink. We have issues with this building. We cannot stay here. We will not stay here. If you would like to suggest staying here. Feel free to do so, but we can.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying, not to interrupt you, but what I'm saying so that my words are understood. What I'm saying is we have to fund the operations each and every year. We cannot just keep raising taxes, property taxes. That's one-third of the population paying for the whole thing. So what we have to do. Instead of backing into it, what we should have been doing is figuring out operational costs, especially if you're going to have two facilities over there because the other one's going to be maintained too. So we're increasing our costs there. I understand we're getting some Medicare, we get some other help. But what these should have been, all been thought about ahead of time and I'm not. Saying we don't need a new jail, we desperately need a new jail. We're going to have to have a new jail. But we need to put a plan together that shows exactly how we're going to do it, not bankrupt the county. And not put more property taxes on citizens already funding the whole thing instead of a sales tax which would fund it and everybody participate, including tourists.
I absolutely agree with that. The beautiful thing about a sales tax is anywhere between forty-five, fifty percent are actually from. Out of county that pay for it. So even better.
I'm with you on that.
I'm with you on that.
And the only way that we're going to cut the ribbons in three years is if we do get the money, because I have to encumber it all upfront. And we got to settle the land case. Those two things happen, yeah, we could be done in three years. But those two things have to happen.
And I think that's probably an important point is that the case has not been settled. So ground cannot be broken. Yeah, but we cannot start, correct? Or you could just go out and get a shovel?
So that's a pending case, so we're not actually allowed to and, and I think that DA is sitting in the back, so they'd probably advise us not to comment on that.
But it is still ongoing. That is a fact.
Yes.
Yes, so we cannot start construction, also a fact.
Any further discussion? All right, if not. Madam Clerk, item six.
All right, so our next item is, um, we're going to ask if it's okay, um, Brandy to come up to join us today and Mr. Alba, if you'd like to join us as well. Um, this is just to continue the discussion we had in our last budget board meeting related to medical services. I know there's been some changes. And so we've just asked to get an update um, as to what those changes are, what the plans are, potential costs. So thank you for joining us today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for letting me be here and, and notifying me and that I was placed on the agenda. Um, so I just want to make it clear that we are pursuing two uh, paths simultaneously. To get us through uh, this transition, we are looking at doing it in-house and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, what Chairman Alba is passing out is a draft plan for transition. Um, at the same time, we're also working to construct an RFP for medical services and then a separate uh, RFP for mental health services. Um, we're going to write that up in a very specific way that meets best practice standards to ensure that what we put out there is what we need as a county. Um, to better serve the population that we have there. Um. I don't have a timeline on that. Uh, they're really pushing it, but we have to have consultants on board to make sure that. What we put in the RFP is actually not only achievable, but um, in line with best practice standards. Where we can, we would love to be able to meet any accreditation standards by the National Commissioner on Correctional Healthcare or the ACA uh, healthcare standards. And, and so that's going to be a process. And recognizing that, you know, the turnkey contract ends on the ninth, um, we have put together a transition plan and. The, the biggest part of that, there's two parts of it that are, you know, the, uh, the bulk of what we were concerned about in the beginning and that was staffing medical. And ensuring that we had uh, continuity of care through the electronic health record. We have both of those items um, already situated. Uh, we have pulled over um, the good medical staff that we, we have, uh, sixty-two people are coming over. And um, we've already got an agreement in place with Core EMR, which is the medical uh, record provider and turnkey. Um, we have the, we have the records. They're our properties, so that's not going to be an issue. Um, and our uh, IT department is working to transition all that system over. We're on. Uh, track to have that all transitioned uh, before the uh. Before midnight uh, on the tenth. Uh, other than that, we have um, very limited costs associated with equipment and supplies. Um, we have a lot of the equipment is already our own. When you're talking about med carts, cots. Um, the uh. EKG machines, all those items we already own, so there's not going to be any upfront costs associated with that. The majority of our upfront costs is going to be in just our pharmacy, the medications. Uh, turnkey has indicated that they're going to leave us with at least a five to seven dating uh, supply. Which will help us get through that. We already have an agreement that we're working on with Diamond uh, Meds, which is the pharmacy that they use. Just to kind of keep everything as easy as possible in the beginning. Uh, certainly as we get further along, we'll start reevaluating the vendors that we're currently um, utilizing to see if we can find some cost savings anywhere. Um, what else?
On the pharmacy, um, are you all also having a discussion what it would look like to partner with the county, with the county pharmacy?
So I have heard a little bit about that. I don't have a lot of information on that, but I'm certainly open to having those discussions. Because I think if there's a way to achieve some cost savings there, we absolutely need to pursue that.
Absolutely, yeah. And then being able to help the county overall.
Yeah, be good, yes. Um, don't have our final numbers. We're still in the middle of trying to do all the transition, but we do not think that this is going to require us to come back to the county and request any additional funding.
Other questions? Brandy, thank you very much.
What about the liability, the insurance? Medical insurance. I mean, we're, got a lot of lawsuits going now, so what about? The doctors?
So we're still looking into that. There's a lot of things that are still very much fluid and we're, we're seeking vendors for. All the different things that we need. Um, we have contracts in place. We have some agreements that people have sent over to us. We're reviewing those and we're trying to make the best decision that we can. Um, in the short amount of time that we have. And again, this is just a transition period. And then once we get stabilized, we're going to continue the RFP process. I'm hoping that we can have that done in a month. Uh, at least getting it issued out in a month. Um, then we can start looking at the vendors that we're currently using, all the different providers, including insurance, what that might look like and we'll, we'll start chipping away at it.
With the population. With us having so much trouble keeping employees as guards. Do we think we can do better in medical?
What do you mean?
If we can't keep employees over there watching the prisoners, now we're going to take over medical, which has to have staffing. You said you have sixty-two, I take it you got them from turnkey?
Mm-hmm.
And so they come and go because obviously over there, that's a problem we're having is with staffing. Do you think we can staff it and keep it staffed? To the quality that the prisoners deserve?
So what I will tell you is that the majority of the employees that we have absorbed. Are excited to be here because they have far better benefits available to them. They have been in the facility, most of them several years. I don't see them going anywhere.
Well, the young people we send to classes to become guards seem to be excited when they first get the job, then when a few months later they quit us.
Oh, that has something to do with a number of things, like the salary that they're being paid and the job that we're asking them to do.
What's our current starting salary at the county jail?
Forty thousand for somebody that doesn't have any experience.
Far more than most of our officers start people at.
Well, I have to. I, I don't have an answer for that, sir.
I do. These people are in cells with some of the most dangerous individuals that you could possibly imagine. They're in a very dangerous building.
I'm not objecting their starting pay. I'm saying based on a forty thousand year starting pay when mine's like thirty-two thousand. And I realize that they're in a job that's pretty rough, but at the same time, and I have a lot of respect for them. We're not keeping them. They come, they're all excited about the job and the starting pay, but then a few months later, they're not happy.
Yeah, they find out it's a much tougher job than what they thought it would be.
Not everybody is suitable for this line of work and, um, you know, it is a job in public safety and their lives are on the line every single day. They walk through those doors.
And so will the nurses and the doctors and people that work over there in the same building.
But they rely on the security staff there to conduct their jobs. Sometimes these officers do not have backup.
That's why you're seeing across the country. This isn't a Oklahoma county problem.
It is not.
This is a national problem. Not only is it a problem with us, it's a problem with law enforcement.
Have we looked into how many other jails are? In-house, all of them are in-house?
You talking about medical?
Medical.
Oh, I thought you were talking about your, your, your problems.
No, 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 in-house medical because of the liability of the insurance, which can be huge. Cost for medical insurance is huge. Doctors pay a huge amount of insurance. Is there other counties the size of ours?
The size of ours in this state?
Anyway, can you?
Yeah, across the country, there are um. There are counties that have in-house. There are ways to look at the liability and there are ways to address those. My concern is. We have to do something today of which. Brandy and her staff has done. An amazing job getting to where we're actually going to be able to take this over because this is a. The undertaking that they have done is incredible. Now, what I'm going to tell you is that we are continuing, just like she said, continuing to run that dual path because my concern is exactly yours. So we're going to have, there is not a way around that right now. There is zero way around it. We can cry about it, we can complain about it. What we are doing is we're going to move forward with the RFP process to where we can address that liability. We are looking at that issue. There is not a way. Around that liability right now. Is not. If you've got a suggestion and you know a way around it. I'm on board. Tell me how to get around it.
Sorry to interrupt. It is a really important conversation, obviously, which is why we really appreciate you coming today, especially to the budget board so that we can. Have these thoughtful conversations so that we can get information, so that we can all be a part of the discussion and looking at how we're going to help. How we are going to pay for these things. Um, but is it, my understanding is um, that this maybe. This process maybe started a little bit earlier than you had planned to. Start this process, is that correct?
We, we were actually looking at, are you talking about doing the transition to in-house? Just to get us through until we can get an RFP together?
I guess, I, I, um, and I could be wrong, but I thought that maybe turnkey was leaving a little bit earlier than expected, which maybe pushed us. A little bit faster and that's why we're kind of in the urgent or.
No.
Because it's felt very urgent and very rushed. That's what, that's what I was trying, trying to understand in that process. Because I don't, I'm not a jail trust member, as you know, and I don't attend those meetings.
The jail trust meeting was very bad for us. The jail trust meeting that Mr. Eccles called. Uh, those of us that sit on the trust, uh, they called the sheriff, they called myself, they called Brandy. That jail trust was very, that meeting was very bad and right then and there. Turnkey decided to no longer be our partner because. There were individuals on the jail trust that thought. And took it upon themselves to go after turnkey and make it personal. And they personally attacked individuals. So those people that, they decided right then and there.
That was the rush. That, that's why I'm just trying to understand the.
They were being our partner. They were going through the process. They wanted to go through the RFP process. The reason they wanted to go through the RFP process is because they know. Uh, in their extensive dealings with other counties across this, this country. Were, we were getting a great bargain. We will not be in the future.
So while we were looking to go in-house for medical, it sounds like that was something that was already looked at. It was rushed, is that correct?
No, we were looking, we, what we were doing is we were going through the RFP process. We were. We were going to put it out to bid for other medical providers across the country. That's what we were doing. We weren't looking to bring it in-house.
Looking to go in-house. That's why I'm just trying to understand the pieces to that.
In-house thing was a uh. It is a way for us to address our constitutional requirement. Continue providing the care that these individuals deserve and need.
Right.
And continue on the track of the RFP.
Liability is incredibly important. Making sure that the inmates have medical is critical, you know, so I'm just trying to understand the pieces. Thank you.
Which is part of the, so we have to, I mean constitutionally, we have to pr- continue pro- provide that care and that's. When they sent that notice and that was the day that everybody clicked and Brandy was like. Let's set into motion what we can do and start talking to turnkey and the individuals and. To their credit, turnkey has been a very good partner even in this transition. And said, if you can talk the employees into coming to work for you that currently work there at that facility and have worked there for numerous years. Feel free to do so. Now what we have learned is. A majority of them are coming to work for us and I would say a vast majority of them are coming to work for us and those are people that have been there through thick and thin and been there through the worst and been there through COVID. And they've been there when it's tough. And they've been there when it's easy and they have committed not only to Brandy and her leadership and, and staff. But also to Oklahoma County and the detention center themselves and to continue that care.
So turnkey's contract's a one-year contract.
Right, that's correct. Well, one year at a time when.
Will we wait till the last minute of that year to tell them that we were going to bid it out and not, not renew their contract?
No, those discussions were happening long before.
Any further questions?
One point I would like to bring up and, and I certainly understand, because it was discussed here, uh, the need to try to stand up in in-house. Um, and do it relatively quickly. I would still say it is of the utmost importance that the, the malpractice insurance and stuff be looked into because it has to run simultaneously. The moment we start providing that care. Um, and, and I, I truly believe that's the. Where I agree with Mr. Warren, that that has to be a priority.
Agree.
It does, absolutely.
And we're sued. Who pays for that lawsuit? It's our citizens.
That's correct.
Settle a lawsuit, it goes under property taxes.
That's great.
I just don't want to burden them with that, so we need to get all our deductions in a row.
Especially when you look at uh, I mean, that's a hundred percent correct and a very, very valid point, what, where our biggest fear is and what our biggest fear in Oklahoma County should be. Is that you look at Tulsa County and it was an eighty-three million dollar judgment that got put on people's property tax. That's a big number. And by the way, that eighty-three million would have been split between a medical provider and the jail. Instead, this would be a hundred percent on us.
So I know that BET always looks at the jail because we look at all of the, our partners um, and how they're funded, but I would like to go ahead and make a motion that BET looks specifically. At um, this project, take a deep dive, continue to partner with Brandy and her team. Um, and then continue to provide the budget board with updates and how we can partner together.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. Okay, please vote. Okay, motion passes. Moving on and we're going to turn items uh, seven through twelve at this time over to Jessica as that she gives us uh, to make a foundation on these.
Thank you, Colonel. So seven through twelve were discussed in policy and governance. They are ARPA projects that we are ready to close out. Uh, meaning that there are no additional expenses um, that we anticipate. And so in order for us to be able to cleanly understand what are our remaining funds that we can use towards the completion or. Um, of any, any additional expenses that may arise from um, projects. Uh, that we know and can vote on how we use those funds. And so we can take them individually or we can take them as a slate. What is the purview of the, the board?
A motion to take them all as a slate.
Okay. I'll second.
So I'm sorry, what was the motion again?
Item seven through twelve.
Got you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further questions? Hearing none, please vote.
I will add for further discussion regarding seven through twelve that by closing out um, each one of these projects. And moving those funds into the fourteen, fifteen account, that puts one million ninety-six thousand and thirty-six dollars back into that fund so that way we can. Continue to evaluate and policy and governance and infrastructure. Um, to determine, you know, if there are any other expenses that would arise and that are needed to complete projects. um, to determine, you know, if there are any other expenses that would arise, um, that are needed to complete projects.
But the, this is all under that, uh, end of this, this, I mean, the end of this calendar year.
Correct.
So that's, that's got to be, we're going to be obligated, they got to be obligated by the end of the year.
That is correct.
Okay.
I just want to confirm that was a motion to approve seven through twelve? Okay, thank you.
And then I'll speak to number thirteen.
Okay, motion passes, item thirteen.
Okay, number thirteen is an ARPA project, uh, for the court clerk's social distancing. And the purpose of the one hundred four thousand dollars is moving expenses for, uh, the court clerk's books to be moved out of the basement of ICB.
Correct, we took bids, uh, ACE got the best bid for us. ACE has worked for us before, keeping our records in order. We're moving out of the basement down to the warehouse and I recommend the, make the motion for the hundred and four thousand.
And I'll be happy to second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. All favor?
Aye.
Please vote. Item number fourteen, Cody.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an item that BET discussed last month and we have a recommendation, uh, to transfer seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents out of reserve into the assessors' general fund account. And this is to pay for some, uh, contract expense, uh, increases in the Esri-related, um, contracts. Uh, as you recall, we did something similar to this for the general government, uh, piece at the last budget board meeting. This cleans that up and gets it for the assessors', uh, budget as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Push it, no, second.
Motion passes. Item number fifteen is a resolution for an interfund transfer of two million dollars, uh, and to appropriate it to the employee benefits. Do I, is John here? Christie? You, I just pinned the rose on you.
What?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
No worries. Good morning. Um, when we do our budget in the spring, we do cash transfers into employees' benefits. July first, that was seven point three. You spent two point five in July, two point five in August, that left two, three. But with the supplement, you added another one point three. All this is, is what you've already voted on. We just now, uh, clearly we need it for expenses, but we're doing it in chunks because of the cash flow issue.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Further questions? Hearing none, please vote.
Aye.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, motion passes. Item sixteen, Cody.
I think this item can actually be struck. The last budget board meeting, part of the September supplement recommendation was moving this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into this particular fund. Uh, there was an agenda item to create the line item. And then part of the recommendation was to move the money. So I think the action needed on this has already been taken.
Yeah.
We don't need it now.
Need to strike.
Okay, we've got a motion to strike.
Second.
Second, please vote.
Aye. Mr. Warren, if I could get a vote from you all, please, thank you.
He's here already. Item seventeen, Mr. Monroe.
Uh, good morning. This sum of money that you see, two million fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, is a reimbursement from Oklahoma City after our completion of the elevator projects in the courthouse that was front-funded from the PBA. The agenda item here calls for the transfer of that sum of money from its present location into project TIF two A, two zero one, three, two, four, zero, to support the build-out of the Investors Capital Building for the district attorney.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Keith. What's that on your shirt?
Truman, one of your favorite characters.
Who is Truman?
He's a former county commissioner.
Truman the Tiger.
He's looking right at you.
I got you.
Okay, item six, or eighteen. This is a transfer out of the, uh, jail capital account, uh, moving money from capital to M and O. The district attorney would like to hire some, uh, expert witnesses for the upcoming case. And it's a professional service, so it has to be an M and O.
It's my understanding that this is uncoming out of the new jail fund?
Yes.
And, um, I think that, at least I had pledged that I would not move funds out of the new jail bucket for things that were not related to the new jail.
Well, this probably is because it's the case for the land.
But it's not building the jail, it's not the property. So I, um, I have a problem with taking out of this fund, so I will be at no.
It is for the property.
But it's, well, because we got ourselves into a lawsuit, so.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, please vote.
Aye.
No.
Motion passes.
I think for future agenda items, we need to make sure it's clear if it's the new jail fund and what fund it's coming out of because we don't all have the numbers memorized.
Item nineteen.
Item nineteen is that same fund. The, uh, board of county commissioners would like to do some additional appraisals on some, uh, land that's in support of the jail. Uh, four thousand dollars for those appraisal services. And it's a professional service, so we have to move it from capital to M and O.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second to approve. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Stacy. Citizens' participation, are there any citizens that would like to participate? I don't think we had anyone sign up. Did we have a clerk? We didn't have anybody.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, bold comments, going to start with, uh, Sheriff.
No comment.
I'd like to offer my prayers to all the people in the eastern part of the United States, the tens of millions that suffered the storm damage and all the deaths and the people that are still looking for, the families. I'd like for everybody to get a chance to say a prayer for them. Thank you.
Um, thank you to our guests that came to speak today. We appreciate your time.
Continue to pray for Commissioner Mons' recovery and grateful to have the opportunity to, to be here and his.
How is he doing?
He's doing well.
Okay. Okay, and I meant to do this while they were here, but I neglected to do it. But I did want to thank, uh, Brandy and most particularly Joe Alba, uh, and his, and his board, uh, the Criminal Justice Authority because they continue to do a lot of good work and that, that I think is incredibly helpful to this whole process, so.
Uh, just to echo what Mr. Warren says and to kind of bring it home, my road superintendent, his sons and daughter live in Asheville, North Carolina. Now, currently they're fine. Uh, he has spoken with them, everything's doing good. But a lot of friends and family that are connected to Oklahoma are actually out there, so kudos to that. And, and on top of which, what you said, I'd like to remind everybody that, uh, the sheriff and I are the only ones that are not volunteers on that jail trust committee. Remember, they volunteer to get abused like that.
No comment.
Okay, no comment. Motion to adjourn? Okay, we got all kinds of motions to adjourn, so we are adjourned.
Great job.